Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 12th, 2014, meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has our dog from the kennel today.
Ready? There you go, come on, let him see ya. Let him see ya. Our featured dog this week is a female lab mix, a couple of years old, I would guess.
Yep.
She was found in Lorraine, she was turned into Lorraine Animal Clinic and she ended up with us. She's looking for a great home and I actually think we're gonna give her to Old Castle as a new mascot.[106.11][106.11](Laughter). You want the abatement, you gotta take a dog. We've only got sixteen dogs in the kennel, so things are going well. I guess people are keeping track of their dogs with the cold weather, but if you're looking for a pet, stop by. She's available for adoption now, correct?
Uh, fifteen.
The fifteenth, okay. Come on.
Saturday. Come on, Saturday. She sees herself on TV.
She sees herself on TV.[128.99][128.99](Laughter).
She's like, "Man, that's a good-looking dog."[131.31][131.31](Laughter). That was cute. I've never seen a dog do that before. She saw herself. She saw herself up there. She saw herself up there.
Maybe she saw that with a male or something.
Her twin. It's funny.
Madam Clerk?
Today we have a enterprise tax abatement, Sheffield Village and Old Castle APG South Inc., which calls for a 28,000 square foot addition to a facility at a minimum of $3 million, and creation of four new full-time jobs within ninety days, relocation of up to ten jobs from another facility, and up to six more new full-time jobs within five years. The abatement will be for ten years on real property at seventy-five percent for years one through five, and six percent in years six through ten.
Madam Hunter, would you like to join us? And you've got Greg J. Cot?
Uh, Jaco?
Jaco, okay.
I appreciate the Commissioners giving us the opportunity to come and ask for this abatement. It's very important to bring in jobs to Lorraine County and to Sheffield Village. We have a good corporate citizen in Old Castle. They've worked on us on many projects. They take care of the environment, they take care of things in the village, and it's important that we have this abatement to bring twenty jobs to the village. Northfield Old Castle has been a company in the village now since 2004. They have kept a constant employment. We've worked with them with abatement on their original building that they built in the village and kept them in business during the time period when the economy's been turned down. And now they like what they see in Lorraine County and what they see in Sheffield Village in cooperation, and they came to ask to expand the building 28,000 square foot and to put two to three million dollars' worth of equipment into the building and to bring in additional twenty jobs to that site. I would like to say that one of the great things that's been an assistance to me as Mayor and a great thing that's helped us along the way is your economic development coordinators. Don Calvert has been an excellent advocate for the project. We've had over twenty projects in the past six years in the village we've worked on. We've worked with Team Lorraine County, we work with them. Having one shop stopping here and the assistance that you get from that department is amazing. And this project wouldn't be moving along with several others we've brought to the village without their help. So I'd like to personally thank that department and Don for her assistance and help us to bring this forth today. If you have any questions, we've got Greg Jaco here, and we also have the site, the manager of the building over here is Greg, and we are here to try to answer any questions you've got in order to get you to agree to this abatement.
Were you able to reach out to the schools and talk to them about it?
The schools have been contacted. In fact, in their last abatement, we gave them their money, and again, it's in this agreement, we'll be giving them a separate check to offset some of the loss that they lost because of this program. The schools has concurred with it.
You're doing a payment to the schools?
Payment in lieu to the schools?
Yes.
For the Community Development Department, you know, we expedited this on the request of the Mayor. Have we been able to secure the proper documentation we needed for the state?
Um, there, we have a few documents outstanding that we need original signatures on, and we also need the check to submit to the state.
Don, you had to come up here. Sorry.
You can use the other mic, too, this way you don't have to stand on John's feet.
Sorry, we do have a few documents outstanding that we need original signatures on, the original application, and we also need the check, the $750 check that the state requires on the company checks.
Okay, now, are all those things here this morning?
No. Those are still outstanding, so...
They brought a personal check.[439.12][439.12](Laughter).
I'll take that.[441.12][441.12](Laughter).
They're gonna overnight a check and the originals, so...
Yeah, so we're continuing to work with Old Castle Corporate and making sure that we get those documents and the check as quickly as possible, and we will get them to Teresa to submit within the time period.
And the state has signed off because the jobs are movement within...
Yes, the state had us add a clause saying that conditional upon the approval of their waiver that this will be clear, so we expect that to be signed, actually, today. We should have that signed in hand and ready to go, but the state allowed us to put that clause in, so we didn't have to postpone this.
So Commissioners, when you make a motion on this resolution, I would actually make a contingent upon all of those noted items being completed successfully, so that without those things, then the resolution wouldn't have any...
Correct.
...responsibility.
And I did let the company know, try to get it to me by Friday, because I have within fifteen days to get it to the state, so...
I'm sure they'll take care of that, but we should make a contingent upon successful cohesion with the outside, you know, those other issues that are identified.
They did bring, we did bring over copies of everything. We realized that we needed the original of those documents, and we have a check here, but we realized that it needed to be on a corporate checking account, and that's what brought up.
Don't worry, John, Lorraine County moves at the same speed business moves. We're gonna get this done. Just wanna make sure that we've got the i's and t's later on. We're good with that, just wanted, I didn't want the Board to not know that there was a few items that we still were looking for. Yep.
Greg, any comments you'd like to make? You have to introduce yourself.
Sure. My name is Greg Jaco with Old Castle. On behalf of Old Castle and the families at Sheffield, we'd like to thank Commissioners for their consideration for this abatement. It is very important for us to continue to grow and to continue to provide opportunities to feed families at that location. I'd like to thank Mayor Hunter and his office, they've been wonderful to deal with. It's a true pleasure to work with the community that really wants to see businesses thrive and grow, and he takes a vested interest in each one of our business operations, so it's been a real pleasure to deal with him in his office. Also, Team Lorraine County, they've been great. They've held our hands through this process. We've had several hiccups in the past with some of our other abatement issues, just not understanding how the paperwork goes and things like that, so Team Lorraine County really took us by the hand, and they've been wonderful to deal with.
Our Lorraine County Community Development Team in particular.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One cog in the whole wheel.
Yeah, right.
Well, again, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve pending all the proper paperwork and receipt of the corporate check.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I just wanna say, Madam Hunter, I talked to you yesterday, I had some questions, and you did answer those questions, so maybe we could just put it out there. I had asked if those jobs that were coming from somewhere else, if they were from Lorraine County or from somewhere else, and you told me that they were from Berea or somewhere.
Yeah, from Berea, and we had the state go out there with our Economic Development Team here to follow through, to make sure that we were dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's to make sure that we didn't have any hiccups in moving us along.
Right, so they are really new jobs.
And that's where your department has been a great help to us.
Correct. And you forgot to mention Sheffield Village, the heart of Lorraine County.
Well, I appreciate that, Lori. Lori's almost, I keep teasing Lori all the time, she lives about 500 feet from the heart of Lorraine County, so she is pumping blood into the county today, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
I just wanna thank the company, too, for your investment into Lorraine County and our community. You know, businesses bring jobs, and thank you for bringing these jobs here.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
I'd also, thank you very much. I'd like to also move up Agenda Item Number 12 in regards to reissuance of hospital facility revenue bonds with Catholic Health Partners, so they don't have to sit through our entire meeting.
Enjoy your meetings. This is Mary Duffy.
We don't see you often enough.
Right.
I can fix that. Commissioners, I'm Mary Duffy from Peck, Schaefer, and Williams. We're bond counsel to the county for these bond issues. This is what I would characterize as a housekeeping matter. There are two old bond issues that the county issued for the benefit of Catholic Health Partners and its nonprofit affiliates in 2002 and in 2006. Those financed a number of hospital facilities around the state, including some senior health and housing facilities, which were recently sold out of the system. What the IRS says is that if you are going to sell a bond-financed facility, you either have to retire the bonds that financed that facility, or you have to substitute other property, and that makes business sense in our own lives. If we bought a car and sold it, certainly our bank would want us to either put that loan on another car or take out, retire the loan. In this case, what Catholic Health Partners is doing is substituting other assets of comparable value and life at a hospital that is being built on the west side of Hamilton County in southern Ohio, and that is allowed to be done under the IRS rules. What the tax law requires is a public hearing, however, and the approval of what the IRS terms as a reissuance of that portion of the bonds for that reinvested tax-exempt bond. So in front of you today is a resolution that authorizes the county to approve the reissuance of a portion of those 2002 bonds and 2006 bonds, and the reinvestment of the proceeds, and then the related tax agreement and IRS form that we will have to file with the IRS to show that reinvestment. And that is the resolution before you. I can answer any questions. I also have with me Bernie Sanders, who is the General Counsel for the region.
Any questions, Commissioner? Commissioner?
Commissioners, we have, we had our due diligence committed on our side with respect to this, and again, you've done these before, and we'll probably do them in the future, but we had it looked over to make sure that, not that we don't trust Mary, she's been a longstanding partner with us, but...
It's always good to check me, sir.
But we did do our due diligence on our side of the House, and everything seems to be in order and proper.
And Pat Metzger held the public hearing earlier this morning.
At nine o'clock.
They did that for this morning.
Madam Clerk, can you read the resolutions?
Yeah. Prove reissuance of certain hospital facilities' revenues bonds issued by the county for the benefit of Catholic Health Partners and authorizing other documents in connection with the reissuance of such bonds.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, thank you.
Under Resolution 1?
There are no Job and Family Services bills or investments appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a request for a very brief executive session, as I know there's some demands upon a few of the Board members for other meetings. There's potential new hires at Golden Acres, Job and Family Services, and I also wish to discuss the potential sale and purchase of real estate. Both of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session, we talk about those items that have been specified. Thank you.
Approve away the reading in the minutes of February 14th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
February 4th.
I'm sorry.
That's Friday.
Yeah.
Valentine's Day was undermined.
You have hearts and stuff, and you look Valentine-ish, so that's, you got that in your mind, I think.
February 4th. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize various payments to Boyer &amp; Cool Home for Funerals Lorraine in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 5901.25 for indigent veterans, $1,000 for David Allen Maed in Lorraine, and $1,000 for Larry Frederick Bartlam in Lorraine.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize Bianca Viler Bailiff for Judge Elwell, Lorraine Municipal Court, effective February 8, 2014, at a bi-weekly rate of $676 in the East End, which reflects the county's two-fifth share.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development and Amend Resolution 13-843 adopted October 9, 2013, to amend the agreement of CT Consultants to extend the scope of services. Said amendment is to reflect Task 1 for acquisition, rehab, resale, should be $1,200 per unit, not $200 per year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under solid waste, approve issuance of waivers for designation pursuant to standard form of waiver agreement effective March 1, 2014, through February 28, 2015, for Fabrizi Disposal Inc., Rumpke Waste Management of Ohio Inc., FSI Disposal, and Kimball Recycling and Disposal.
Mr. Bailey? We've spent way too much time together past week.
Oh, yes, sir, we have. This is a year since we started this process, and we, I convinced the Commissioners to invoke flow control, get these companies under contract, and this annual renewal on these contracts, and that's what we're here to do today. It's made five new companies come in and haul solid waste out of our county. It's made a competitive business platform for everybody to operate fairly off the same level, $2 fee, and it's dropped prices in our community across the board, and I think we've seen that. So it allowed the consortium to happen. Without this, a consortium would have never happened, so this was an important piece of legislation you guys passed last year. Really important.
Thank you. I'll move.
Second.
Anything further? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve and enter the First Amendment to loan agreement with ODOT State Infrastructure Bank for Redfern Road, Columbia Township, and Sugar Ridge Road, North Bridgeville Projects. Resolution 13-643 approved $202,000 for Redfern. The total construction was $159,826, therefore leaving a balance of $40,174. Engineer has requested these funds be used to fund the portion of Sugar Ridge Bridge, which was awarded by Resolution 1449, in amount of $209,000, and $142,416 is being paid by ODOT with a balance of $167,184 to split between the county and the North Bridgeville.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I have no further comments this morning, thank you.
Mr. Anus?
I appreciate your time scheduled, Commissioners. There are three matters of pending litigation that I'll try to keep short, but I do need to discuss them with you in executive session.
Commissioners' report.
This past Saturday, they hosted Ed Fitzgerald at the Charleston Coffee House, and he had a nice presentation, and I just gotta say, I shake a lot of hands, and for some reason, he has got the best handshake ever, and I gotta tell him that next time I see him. He's got the best handshake ever. I don't know, there's just something about it, it's special. That was, no, that was Saturday during the day. Saturday evening, they had a benefit for my brother-in-law and sister-in-law, Larry and Debbie Kukowski, and I'll tell you what, there was overwhelming support for that, tons of people I haven't seen in 20, 30 years. It was really great, and I just wanna thank everybody who participated and contributed to that. And then yesterday, Mr. Kalo and I attended the State of the City for Illyria at Westland Village. They had a delicious lunch, and Holly Brenda did a nice job of telling everything that's going on in the city of Illyria and what she hopes to accomplish in the future, so... End of my report.
Busy week. Again, I attended the Pete Soto Chili Cook-Off, myself, Commissioner Williams was there also. Packed house. Congratulations to Chris Barton from the Avon Police Department, who I believe this is his third or fourth year hosting this. They moved from the Avon Knights of Columbus to Lorraine County Community College this year. Great turnout. Sheriff's Department from Franklin County was there, Coyote County Sheriff's Department, just a slew of people there, and thank for the eight or nine hundred people who showed up, raised money for a great event. It goes to help officers and their families in times of trouble. Also, Commissioners Association, we had a conference call, the Metropolitan Committees, again, just working on legislative issues that affect all of us. LGF is always, our local government funds are always a main topic of concern on how they're gonna work with us in the mid-biennial review of the budget coming up. As I said, Keith Bailey and Mike Challander, spent most of the week with them on different projects. Our Solid Waste Policy Committee met yesterday. We had two presentations, one by Barnes Nursery out of Erie County, and one from Kurtz Brothers, who have locations here in Lorraine County in regards to an organics processing and recycling, where it's food waste and such, and they turn it into mulch. Very informative. We started at the beginning of our new five-year plan. We have till, what, June of next year, Keith, I believe, to have that done. We went through the first two sections yesterday. Not a whole lot of changes there, other than cleaning up some language from the older That's about it. All done. Also, Holly Brenda, Mayor Brenda, nice job, a lot of discussion on transportation and issues in regards to our transportation center, and working with Nowaka on a multiple county plan to get leftover money redistributed to northeast Ohio.
Probably the best cupcake I ever had.
Best handshake and best cupcake in the same week?
Best handshake, no, this cupcake, I'm serious. Cut into the middle of it, and I thought it was hard, like it was overcooked. There's a big solid piece of, like, dark chocolate, and it was like a surprise after surprise in this cupcake.
You have had an amazing week.
I had a great week.[1415.12][1415.12](Laughter).
Wow. I've always been sweets by Maggie and Amber, she does a great job.
Yeah. So, yeah, the Pete Soto event, that was an amazing event. I got the invite to your city event, I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it there.
That's okay. I know it's hard to decide which one to go.
Yeah, there's so much going on this weekend, and, yeah, just a wonderful event. I was surprised, College did an amazing job hosting the event. Congratulations to the Amherst Police Department for winning the Chili Cook-Off again. A great recipe out there, but, you know, you got everyone trying to get you to give them the best ticket. I was talking with my friends at the FBI and the Sheriff's Department and everything, and I ended up giving my ticket away because great chili.
Too much pressure.
Too much pressure.[1465.41][1465.41](Laughter). Well, you don't wanna handle that pressure when they got guns, so... But, no, it was a great event, and I really appreciate all the hard work that people put into that. Monday, or not Monday, yesterday, I actually had a couple of conference calls coming up. One, we're working on a site location for a company I've been working with for about two years now. They're now interested in actually looking at the locations here, preferably one at the county homes, but I do have multiple locations that they're gonna look at. If all goes well, could possibly have construction starting this summer, which would bring in ten to twelve jobs. So I wanted to thank Don Rematchik, Mr. Metzger, and Mr. Cordez for working with me to arrange the meeting, get everyone together so we can go through, and hopefully get this done in the near future. It's been a long project, but when you're trying to bring a company into the county that's not here, it does take time, and I appreciate everyone's work on that. So that'll take place on Friday. Last week, we had discussions about the old courthouse, you know, what we're going to do with it, and I've had talks with other, a company a year or two ago, about possibly coming in and do the renovation, purchase the building, renovate it, and then lease it back to the county. I don't know what the cost's gonna be on it, but later today, I will have a conference call with them again, to set up a time to at least come out and take a look at the facility and give us the numbers, and then we can take a look at which direction we wanna go, and again, if we can go there. I may in contact with Mr. Cordez on it, and I will be running it through him, so you guys are up to date on the project, but...
We've had a lot of those offers over the years, just a matter of what we're gonna lease it back for, Tom?
Well, exactly, and, you know, the one thing that I think we could do is possibly even lease it back to attorneys. I mean, I've talked to a lot of attorneys, I have a lot of friends that are attorneys, that would like to possibly even move down here if they could get into the old courthouse.
It'd make great office building, as long as it met the intent of the will is the big problem there.
Right, and we had...
They could have me nine years, eight years to break, get the deed finally broken.
Right, well, we're talking with the company, talking with the company, they're aware of it. They have done work with other counties. This is a company that's actually building one of the largest VAs in the country, and also build the FBI headquarters throughout the country, or buildings throughout the country as well, so. Good organization, and they're here in northeast Ohio, so that'll be taking place. And then I have my friends that just came in from Vision and Views. Andre, if you would like to come up? What they are, is they're a new, basically a newspaper that's gonna be reaching out to the community, and they're just getting started, and local talent here, trying to improve information getting out to different groups throughout the county, and Andre, if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're hoping to do here with the newspaper? Thank you. While he's handing it out, hell, I'll just, I don't normally like doing this, but just so individuals can kinda see it. Okay, thank you. Andre and I met, actually, at a Martha Luton King poetry reading.
Right, spoken word.
I wasn't doing poetry, but, it was a great event there, and impressive young man here, so...
Thank you very much, sir. Well, I'm here to represent and introduce to you Vision and Views Media. We're an organization that vigorously explore and explicate only positive news and educational aspects of the African-American community. aspects of the African-American community, um, we attempt to discuss the issues that tend to plague the minority communities, such as diabetes, high blood pressure, prostate cancer, and financial distress. Our goal is to change the mindset of the individuals who have negative attitudes towards minorities in general. Um, we seek out those minorities who have made great strides to contribute to their sector and give hope to those people who need to see someone who has reached beyond their circumstances and made a difference to mankind and the world. Um, now, I, I do understand there are ver, there are many other newspapers around our area, we have The Journal, Plain Dealer, Chronicle, uh, Call &amp; Post, Oberlin News Tribune, but what sets us apart is the fact that we focus on the minority market and we print or reprint only positive news. Um, we feel that our soc, society is oversaturated with negative images, um, that our audience may begin to believe that is who they really are. Uh, we tend to encounter the images of minorities in mainstream media, um, also hoping in the long term to change the way media portrays minorities. Um, there is good news in our community, and our readers are tired of only seeing the bad side of it. Um, for many years, minorities have been placed in, on the front of local newspapers when they have either committed a crime or been a victim of a crime. So, the work we have placed into this media company has become not just a regular newsprint, but it has become a viable movement, um, an expression of love to a sector of people that appreciates possessing something that they can call their own. So, today, we invite you to partner with us on our journey by sponsoring our media, media company. Um, right now, we're spot, we're seeking to acquire at least 10 sponsors at $10,000 each, and 20,000 subscribers at $60 a year by December of 2015, and we've just started our journey, that, the paper I just handed to you guys today is actually our first edition. Um, now, we have been in print for several years, though, because originally, we launched, uh, a minority-focused newspaper three years ago called Our Voice, um, in which we only published positive news and events. In 2013, the paper was renamed Vision and Views Media, and that's where we are today, we have a strong social media presence, uh, we also have a website, and, um, of course, we have our newspaper, which we launched the first week of February. So, that's what we came to talk to you about today, and kinda give you some information, introduce you to the paper, leave some copies for you guys to look over, and, um, actually, we just appreciate you giving us the time, the, the platform to speak about it and introduce it to the rest of the community.
Yeah, well, and where will, where can people get the newspapers?
Um, on the last page of the newspaper, there is a list of all our distribution locations in and around the city of Lorraine.
Okay. Um, what is your website that they can actually?
Our website is www.visionandviewsmedia.com.
All right, can you repeat that slower?
Yes, sir, it's, uh, www.visionandviewsmedia.com.
We're gonna have Hal put that up on the screen for you, too.
Oh, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Um, now, we hope, like I said before, we hope to reach 20,000 subscribers, um, as of right now, our budget calls for the distribution of 10,000 copies of this paper a month, and one rule of thumb in newspapers that I learned that for every one paper, you could count on about three or four people to read it. So, if we can reach, uh, if we could, if we could print off 10,000 copies a month, and at least four people read each one of those copies, that's about 40,000 people reading our publication every month, and, um, I think our population in Lorraine County is somewhere around 65,000.
304,000 for Lorraine County.
I'm sorry, the city, I'm sorry, sir.
There you go.
Let me correct myself, sorry about that, so just in the city alone, we're at about 65,000 people, and if we could get 40,000 publications out, we're reaching a large part of our population, and I think we need some good news, especially what's been going on these days.
Well, I, I know you, you've been involved in a lot of different organizations.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Helping out the community, getting the word out there.
Correct.
Helping out with the Ohio Hispanic Coalition as well.
Yes, the Ohio Hispanic Heritage Coalition, I, I do some work with the NAACP, um, I do several community events, and even through our company, we also do several, we have four signature events that we do each year, and, um, those events, they start with our Mother's Day Wine Sip, where we tribute mothers, and we have the wineries from around northeast Ohio come in with some of the wines and the cheeses and the things that go along with Wine Sip, then we have our, uh, which is become, it would, one day it'll be our signature event, which is our June Team Celebration, which is the celebration of the ending of slavery in the United States. Uh, from there, we go on to August, where we have a Back to School Fest, now, we don't wanna just do the load the bus or the come get free supplies, we wanna kinda give going back to school an exciting feel and have a one-stop place where families could come, get supplies, coats, uh, you name it, anything the kids need to go back to school with. And then we kinda finished the year off with our, right now, signature event, which is the Jazz Chocolate Fest, and the Jazz Chocolate Fest, we also inducted our first class of the African-American, Lorraine County African-American Hall of Fame in October, and, um, we have